It is July 21st, 2020, and this is a board study session. Before we begin, we're going to start with an open session and call to order. And so I'm sorry, it's not a public study session, it's a board meeting. And may I please ask, let's see, Dustin, to please lead us into the flag salute.
Please stand down. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel, for the flag. I can see that. Okay, so we are going to plead, I need an approval of the agenda, I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Margot, and thank you, Mr. Spitz. We have public comment, and Mr. Margot, did you receive my email?
Yes, I did.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hacker, do you mind taking a vote on the agenda?
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Koshar, for.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. May I please have a approval of the agenda? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you so much, Mrs. Marcus, I see your hand, great, thank you. And okay, we have public comment. So let's start with Mrs. Marcus, can you please lead us with a comment? And then it'll be Noah, Mel, and then I'll be the last one.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And everyone else mute themselves.
Okay, I've got them printed here, so it's easy to read. Dear President Hacker and Board members, depending on when my letter is read today, you've either heard from many BHEA members already about their feelings on teaching from school sites during the fall, or you are about to. As President of the BHEA, my advice to you is to listen to what they have to say. It's clear the community already has your ear. I am forwarding the posts from Facebook, WhatsApp, and Discord, all the time where divisive comments are frequently made by at least one member of this board. I've even recently had to give an interview on the protest some community members made in Beverly Park with signs that read, "The teachers' union is worse than the virus." I understand parents are frustrated. We are all frustrated. Nobody thought we'd be in worse shape in July than we were in March. But that is not a political, but that is, but this is not a political issue. It is a health issue, and you cannot simultaneously say safety is your main concern while also requiring teachers to do on campus what they can more safely do from a location with a better isolation. It's scientific, it's logical. Beverly Hills Education Association slogan shows two hands reaching toward each other, symbolizing the agreement possible between us. The irrational idea to have students safe at home and teachers exposed on campus threatens to pull those two hands apart, perhaps farther than ever before. I constantly hear, "We are all in this together." If that is the case, as BHEA president and a music teacher in the district, I say it is time for more harmony and less discord. Sincerely, Ethan Smith. Educators working on, this is our comment. Dear Members of the Board, I am a Beverly Hills High School Wellness Counselor. I have had the pleasure of working at Beverly Hills High School for the past 15 years. I founded the Norman Aid Wellness Center and many programs that have protected the mental health and wellness of our high school students. Imagine me working from school with a mask on at all times, talking to my students with half of my face covered. When they are hurting, they don't see that I care. When they are happy, they don't see my joy. This is what I and our school counselors would look like, counseling students virtually from our offices. Our school counselors work in tiny offices that are lined up next to each other in one counseling center. This pandemic is surging out of control in LA County. If we don't feel it is safe for our students to return to campus, why would it be safe for educators? Students and educators deserve to have their health protected. I am a cancer survivor, but because I've had cancer 22 years ago, I worry that I might not be able to get doctors' notes to work from home. It is not necessary for me to risk my health and return to the Beverly Hills High School to counsel students when I could serve students better from home. I may need to take a leave of absence so I don't put my health at risk. And so I have children, and so I have childcare for my twins, since my husband and I are both educators for the BHUSD. I have worked, working all summer building a program around wellness that will serve the middle school and high school students' physical, mental, and emotional health. I am so excited to have the opportunity to extend the Norman Aid services and programs and reach to a larger audience, but I can't put my health or wellness at risk. I ask our board to please allow us to work from home and to protect our health. Thank you. Ally Norman Franks, Beverly Hills High School Wellness Center. And I have one more. Dear Dr. Breggy, Mrs. Hacker, Mrs. Marcus, Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz, and Mrs. Walker-Schuman, I write to you once again as a veteran of Beverly Hills High School and as a 28-year member of this community. I am relieved that you made the decision to keep our students safe by keeping them out of the physical school building. I appreciate that this was a difficult decision and the right one. I write again because I am concerned about teachers and staff being required to physically return to school in August. I am confused as to why you are making a decision that keeps our students safe but puts our staff at risk. I understand that there is concern about accountability with regards to teachers. I can't speak for other teachers, but I can tell you that I met with my kids nearly every day. I was available, I was available to students every day and into the night. Many of the kids that had my cell phone number, from grammar to vocabulary to my great love, literature, I showed up for the students. Since school ended, even though I wasn't sure until seven days ago as to our plan, I have taken countless hours of online training to prepare for the return to distance learning. I spent all of last week in a class with Stanford University using Stanford Online High School Teachers as instructors. I was inspired and most excited to see all of the ways that we can provide meaningful instruction as we tackle this behemoth of an educational challenge. The board plan of forcing teachers to return to school puts your teachers, administrators, and other staff at risk. If we are to be at school for the entire day, workday, we will be forced into commercial spaces such as bathrooms, hallways, and elevators. I ask you, why take this risk when there are other means of ensuring accountability? As someone who is immunocompromised, if I am forced by your directive to redo them to school, I will have no choice but to wear a mask every day from the moment I get into the building until I get back into my car. I will be forced to teach online wearing a mask. Your directive would cause further strain in my family life and it puts my elderly parents, who have not touched or hugged since March 12th, at risk. Further, I support administrators working with teachers who are struggling in the online form. These same administrators need support in order to do their best work. They also should not be placed at risk. Again, once the virus is contained and properly safety measures are put into place, we should return to physical school. I urge you to use Rachmaninoff's, Rachmaninoff's sympathy when dealing with our staff at this time. Please prioritize the health and safety, not only of the students, but also the teachers who love them as their guiding force. Sincerely, Julie Goller.
That's it. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Noah will go next. Oh, I'm sorry, Mel's supposed to go next, and then Noah.
I'm upright. I have three letters to read. The first one is, "As LAUSD knows, there is no safe way to reopen in person next month when over 1 in 10 people tested are positive, and they will be 100% online. Any in-person classes this fall at BHUSD seems reckless and unfair to teachers, staff, students, and families. None of the so-called mental health benefits of being in school in person have been studied under life-threatening circumstances like this, so those studies cannot be extrapolated to now. The risks outweigh the benefits. Please start 100% online until we know more and the pandemic numbers are under control. Now is not the time." Cheryl Arut, PSYD licensed psychologist. And the next one is, "Dear Board members, now that it is likely schools will be starting the year with distance learning, I am writing to ask that teachers be allowed the opportunity to choose to work from home. Requiring all teachers to teach from their classrooms puts all of us at unnecessary risk. The use of shared common spaces, shared bathrooms, under-ventilated rooms, and inevitable teacher-staff interactions puts all of us and our families at higher risk of contracting COVID and further spreading it throughout the community. Many of us and members of our households have pre-existing conditions that make us more vulnerable to the disease. Therefore, if we are able to provide the same instruction from home, I ask that you make that an option. Respectfully, Chris Guthheins." And the third one is, "Dear Members of the Board, as you decide the structure of BHUSD Live this year, I would like to address one vital aspect, where teachers will be asked to work whether at home, on campus, or flexing between the two. First, know that given the choice, I prefer to be on campus. I love my classroom, and I need the teaching tools that are only available there. However, I believe it is critical that we empower each educator to make the decision for themselves. I have a personal story for context. Last February 16th, a Sunday, I awoke with an intense sore throat. I had no symptoms the day before, so mostly I was annoyed. By the end of that day, I was fatigued, and I had started to develop a weird, dry cough. I thought it was odd, since I was not congested. It did not feel like a cold. I brushed it off to one of the many ailments I get in a year as part of a job that exposes me to so many humans in a given day. On Monday, I was feeling out of breath, and the cough was worsening. By Friday, I was coughing so badly I couldn't catch my breath. Multiple times at school, I couldn't make it through the class without collapsing in a coughing fit. Why did I keep coming to school? Well, like most teachers, it's hard to take a day off. Students, projects, deadlines. Plus, I felt, I felt guilty for the several days I had missed in the fall due to a miscarriage, and I needed to save my days for the fertility treatments I was undergoing. It's the dilemma so many teachers face. I needed my sick days, and I didn't feel bad enough to justify staying home. I took one half-day during that week when I literally couldn't go on after lunch. I got a colleague to cover for me, and I went home to rest. Fast forward to May. A long list of COVID symptoms are now unknown. As soon as a reliable antibody test was available, I took it, I tested positive. Sure, it's possible that I caught COVID elsewhere after lockdown, but I have not been sick since. I have consulted with several doctors, and they all agree that my timeline of symptoms, coupled with a COVID antibody test, mean I very likely had it in February. I want to emphasize that next year, when one of my colleagues wakes up with a sore throat or a headache, they need to stay home. If my two-year-old daughter is exposed to daycare, which she has to attend in order for my husband and I to work, I will need to quarantine immediately for 14 days. Would it be better for a sub to come in and take over for me? No. In that case, it makes sense that I exercise my choice and teach from home. Is it optimal? No. Would I rather be in school? Yes. Should I risk exposing my colleagues to COVID? Absolutely not. I will be seven months pregnant when school starts. That makes me high-risk, since sadly, there is still uncertainty, uncertainties surrounding how long my antibody response keeps me protected. It is not a gamble I'm willing to take. Fewer people on campus means a safer place for those that are there. For those who have been potentially exposed or wake up feeling ill, but not quite ill enough for a sub, the ability to stay home needs to be part of the equation. Thank you for prioritizing the health and safety of our staff. Regards, Alexis Crane." That's it, that's the my three.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. You're next.
Okay. Hi, I have two comments. One, have the board looked into holding classes outdoor with a large projection and having different instructors teach on a podium? Or any ideas in this area, outdoor approach versus indoor classrooms that could only hold 10 to 12 students? Two, can the cleaning be done on a daily basis after school hours, see from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, instead of cleaning days Friday through Sunday? Vavanna Shaw. Second one. Hello, Board, this letter is written on behalf of a number of middle school instructional assistants. We know it is not an easy task to determine how to provide the best education possible for our students while keeping everyone safe during this pandemic. We hope this letter will provide you with an understanding of how many of the middle school instructional assistants perform their duties in order to ensure that the needs of the special education students and teachers are successfully met. We are each assigned to a teacher who is a case carrier for specific students and to whom we provide details regarding those students' progress. Throughout the week, we join these students in Google Meets, assisting in live lectures when possible, while also making notes of attendance, upcoming projects, tests, and verbal communications regarding expectations and important information. We track their progress by providing details such as missing assignments, performance on tests, class participation, and behavior. The case carrier is notified by us on a daily basis of this, and if there are any concerns or accommodations which may be helpful. This gives the teachers the ability to be aware of how each of their students is doing in his/her classes, and they are able to communicate with homes and students as needed. Schedules permitting, we also meet with the special education teacher during their scheduled lessons to assist smaller groups. Being that we are in the general education classes, we are knowledgeable as to what they are studying and can aid in small groups or one-on-one scheduled times with the teacher present. We provide a weekly Google Doc that includes a list of missing assignments, current grades, and any positive or negative observations we have noted. We are essentially acting as their eyes and ears. For those of us in the high-risk category, the work we perform can be accomplished thoroughly and successfully from home while keeping safe. We do look forward to the time when we once again can interact with the students and each other in person safely. Thank you for your time, we appreciate your efforts in trying to accommodate everyone during this challenging time. Debbie Wright, Alana Grayson, Claudio Ordones, and Sheri Moore-Golden. And finally, Board members and Dr. Breggy. The three of us are dedicated classified employees with almost 60 years of service to the district between us. We are incredibly committed to the students, parents, and staff of BHUSD. We have been successfully teleworking from home since March 16th. We were more accessible to everyone during this time. We were answering emails early in the morning, late at night, and on weekends. We have found we were more productive. One long-term Stanford study found that remote employees had a 13% improvement in performance, partly because they were more likely to work the full workday and because it was easier to concentrate. As employees, we are concerned about our health, our safety, and our security, and we feel we may not be as productive on-site. To be effective and productive is to keep us in a safe environment. The rate of disease is much higher than those who do not have the luxury of teleworking from home. The current building, we would return to, is old and has poor ventilation. Two of us are close to 65 years old, and one of us has underlying health issues. Working on a school site is something we are very concerned about doing. Please reconsider the supporting staff to be in harm's way and putting our families at risk. Thank you, Michelle Buckley, Amy Price, Michelle Redstone. Those are my three, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Okay, so I have three as well. Okay, campus closure. When BHUSD schools, schools were closed last March, they were closed to all students and staff. Why now, with cases even higher? Would you interpret the school closure any differently? We are providing services, instruction to students virtually. Why would you ever insist we risk the lives, our lives, to do what we can do safely from home? Please give us the choice to work from school or at home. Just because students are not on campus does not mean we would have zero risk of exposure. COVID-19 is airborne, and droplets can remain in the air for several minutes. So how can anyone, how can you ensure we don't get sick just walking through the halls at school, or three of us sharing a room with no outside ventilation? Don't ask me to risk my life and my family's life to perform my job. Please give us the courtesy of trusting us to do our job where we feel safe. We do not ask you to risk your life to hold a board meeting. Are you willing to risk dying, or are you, are you willing to risk dying or your spouse dying for today's meeting? Or are you meeting virtually this afternoon? And this comes from Paige Rubin. The next one is live streaming option after return to school. To your Board of Education, thank you again for your leadership in response to COVID-19 epidemic. We look forward to starting this year with a robust live streaming format. When it is time to return to school, please consider allowing those who cannot attend in person due to medical concerns to continue remotely via live stream. This will allow students to maintain the vital connections they need with their teachers and peers in order to excel. As the board discussed previously, Apex is not equivalent, an equivalent alternative to live streaming, and those who may not be able to return when school eventually opens should be given the option to continue to learn via live stream. And that comes from Julia Green. And the last one that I have. Dear Board members, it is imperative this school district, that the district allow teachers to have the choice to teach virtually from a remote location or from school. When we first went on distance learning in the spring, Los Angeles County had 563 confirmed COVID-19 cases. All of those cases were in Beverly Hills. As of yesterday, Los Angeles County has 159,045 confirmed cases, 496 in Beverly Hills. In early April, teachers were allowed to return to their classrooms to retrieve items to help them with distance learning. In May, we returned to box up our students' personal items. In both instances, we had to sign up for a particular time to enter the building so that there wasn't more than one teacher in a hallway at a time. We had to wear masks and gloves and only enter through one door of the school. I'm unable to understand why it's now okay for the entire staff to return to campus all at the same time, when the cases of COVID have skyrocketed in our country. The staff is the most vulnerable demographic to contract this disease. Many of our schools have poor ventilation, inadequate number of restrooms, and workrooms that don't allow six feet distancing. If we are required to teach from our classrooms, teachers may be wearing masks and shields during instruction. And sadly, if too many teachers test positive, the schools will have to be shut down anyways. Teachers have learned a lot from our experiences with the first round of distant learning. The most important thing is to make valuable connections with our students to make distant learning successful. Having worried teachers behind masks faces is not the way to start this challenging school year. Please consider this when making your decision. Respectfully, Joanna Smith, fourth-grade teacher from Hawthorne. So this concludes public comment. We had over 19 letters submitted to the board. We are not going to read every single letter, but we pulled out a mix of letters that pretty much contain the same message that you have listened throughout this time of public comment. We will enter the rest of the letters into the record. And so again, we do read every single letter, and we take them seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to write such comprehensive emails. And on behalf of the board, I thank you for your time. And so with this being, now this concludes our public comment period, and I'm going to move the agenda forward. We have, see here, let me bring my agenda up. Okay. So we need to, now I need a motion to approve BHUSD reopening plan for fall of 2020.
I will, I will so move.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. I'm sure we have some discussion about this. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Breggy before we all take a vote here. And so, Dr. Breggy, did you or your staff want to lead the discussion? And just make some, some, you know, information made public to, 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 to us and to, of course, anyone who's watching on this important matter. Thank you, Dr. Breggy.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Hacker. And as I bring up my screen, I just want to thank our Board of Education for moving to a new platform today. You know, the teachers have talked a lot about preferences for Zoom over Google Meet. So we thought the best way to, 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 to see this for ourselves is to kind of model it for ourselves and to try it out. So I just want to thank everybody for, you know, testing this with us today and seeing if this is something that we prefer in the future. Can somebody just give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen? Great, thanks. I'm just gonna try to make it a little bigger here. Sorry, the present is not coming up on my screen, so I'm looking for it. Oh, here we go. I also want to thank Romeo and Ryan. I know that they were here Friday night as well, helping with the transition over to the new platform. So I want to thank them very much for giving up Friday afternoon and into the evening to help make this all possible. What I'd like to do just now is go over a couple of informational pieces with you. The first one, Mr. Seaman and Ms. Chisholm will join me as we share some information. I thought it would be prudent to start with just kind of where we are right now. We're, we realize that we're putting a lot of information out there right now, and it's moving quickly. So we want to just start with where we are right now. As one of the teachers has indicated in one of the letters that you just read aloud, that we do have about 500 cases of COVID-19 in Beverly Hills. As we've said every meeting, that we all want our students to be back in classrooms as soon as possible, that this has been a very difficult situation. It will continue to be a difficult situation as we work towards a very unpredictable future at this point. And want you to know that just none of the decisions are easy, and it's all about making the best decision with the information that we have at the time that we have it. As you know, last week was a big week in the news, and that impacts us greatly. The first piece of news that we got last week, last Monday, was the public health order. That's an order that we've been looking for, for over, for over a month, that basically provides us with the rulebook. It's not guidelines, it's not suggestions, but it's actually a requirement to follow all of the items in the public health order. So we finally have that in our hands. And then we also received direction from the governor, which we're going to talk about in just a few minutes. So today, we're presenting this plan to you to get your feedback. We will, we'd like to be able to publish this on Friday. And there's another piece to this plan, too, because there is a physical reopening that has a lot to do with the, the cleaning schedules, the operational part of the schedule. And so we're working with our think tank to be able to get those recommendations into writing and into practice, and then we'll share those with you as well. So there's a lot of information that's forthcoming that's really specific to our school district, our classrooms, our school buildings, and that's really important to be able to share that information with you. Another piece of information where we are right now is with the governor's news. We did move the deadline for the ILC. So that was moved to July 27th at 8 o'clock AM. And so it's a new deadline, it's the same program, there's no change there. But we wanted to be able to ensure that we're providing parents with the most information up until that point to make a decision whether they want the ILC or if they're going to be engaged in our distance learning, which is going to be live at BHUSD, which we'll tell you about in a little bit. The ILC numbers right now, and Mr. Seaman will talk about this in just a few minutes. We have about 441 students that are enrolled in the ILC. You can see the breakdown right there. The process has been going on for quite some time. In fact, we've never stopped making this a priority since, even in, in March, when we had physically closed our buildings. Even when we started to meet in April, we started to meet with different stakeholders because we knew that it was a possibility that, that we would be, you know, having things online in the summer, and then also the possibility of starting in the fall in distance learning. So we've been meeting consistently with many of our stakeholder groups since then. This has really been ongoing. As you know, the Board of Education, we've had two study sessions, and also we've discussed. As you know, the Board of Education, uh, we've had uh two study sessions and we're, also we discuss it every single board meeting. It's always in my report to the board, so we're keeping it to the forefront of, of all of our work uh at the district office. Um, we continue to just vet out uh the uh, all of the plans, uh, whether it's instructional or whether it's operational. Um, and we are looking at opportunities for uh PD for our staff, uh, whether, again, it's instructional or it's operational. Um, this is not about just putting a plan out there. We have to properly train and make sure that we have the resources and the knowledge to be able to um fully execute this plan. Um, we've been working with all of our local uh stakeholder groups. Uh, we've been working with our um local officials as well and our state officials, uh, we reach out to um on a daily basis as we continue to get the latest uh information. We have such a great uh think tank. So our Return to Learn Think Tank, which is made up of our experts, um, have been so valuable to us, uh, because we're educators and our backgrounds are uh teachers and we've been principals and, and work at the district office to, to have the, somebody in another field that's considered to be an expert, uh, be able to reach out and help us and assist us and make recommendations. It's been a fascinating process, um, and I've enjoyed so much of it, and we're um continuing to meet with them even after the, the last date that we had uh scheduled, um, because a lot of the information is still coming in. And so uh, we look forward to sharing some more of that information with you at our next meeting. Some of the key dates that we have coming up, um, obviously our meeting today uh to talk about the reopening plan. Um, and then by the end of the week, we'd like to be able to publish that and share that with our parents. Um, we do have the application deadline for the ILC. And as of now, we're, we're, we're looking at a, a start, a date for um students returning on August seventeenth. So I've been talking a lot about the think tank um in, in many of our reports. And so um, it's been kind of an enigma where people haven't really understood what it is. And so I just want to give you a brief um overview through this video, just so that you can see some of the things that we're working on.
Everybody, it's Dr. Bregge, your superintendent. Uh, we're here at Beverly Vista. In fact, we're visiting all of our schools. We're working very closely with our experts in our think tank. And in one hand, we have the public health order, and in the other, we have a checklist to make sure that we are going to meet and exceed every expectation that the county department of public health has provided us. We're having a great time looking around, trying to uh work through many of the challenges and uh get some recommendations from people who are considered to be experts in their field, from the medical field, social emotional development, and also workplace controls and compliance.
Hi, I'm uh, Lee Billorn, I'm a resident here at Beverly Hills, right near Hawthorne. And I'm part of the think tank, and I think we did a great job today identifying what things we need to do as uh, as leaders in the community to assure that when our kids come back to school, that they're safe, that our teachers and our staff are safe, and hopefully working together, we will spend the time of this by this, hopefully make things better soon.
Hi, my name is Dawson Resnick. I am a teacher here at Hawthorne, a teach kindergarten, and I'm here working with the think tank to see what we can do about fitting in the requirements for this health order. And we want our kids back in school as soon as possible, but we need to make sure that it's safe and feasible and reasonable, how to get them.
Um, I'm Andrea Rosenfeld, and I work as a school psychologist. And I think that the work that this think tank has been doing has been absolutely essential and beneficial in so many ways and supporting what's needed in the social emotional realm in particular. And whatever's going to help get our students back to a healthy social emotional lifestyle and interacting with each other in a positive manner. Uh, it's been absolutely rewarding and amazing to be part of this.
Thank you for watching our video. We just finished another night with our think tank. I'm currently at Hawthorne School, and we are working through the checklist from the public health order. Here's just an example of how everything is going to be taped up as the order is very clear about not using drinking fountains. And so markings like this have to be done all over the school. So tape will be all of the drinking fountains shut down, as well as markers where kids can stand and wait throughout the entire school.
And so we look forward to uh sharing some more information from the think tank uh and some of the members um at our next uh school board meeting um on the twenty-eighth. Um, as you can see, there's been some information communication going on uh now about um device collection um that we've communicated with parents. Um, because schools are still closed, we're getting really creative about how students can drop materials off. Um, and then also, I will be sending out information about how they can be collected as well. Um, but that will be ongoing throughout the summer to get creative and do um as much as we can so that people do not have to leave their cars um to uh start providing information and getting information. And Mr. Seaman, do you want to?
Yeah, um, a, a, just around the professional development, obviously here is just the beginning of the laundry list of opportunities that the I-4 coaches uh in collaboration with aid services, school principals, assistant principals have created and started to employ. Um, already, we've um launched the Google Classroom, building your virtual classroom. We jumped in today to my view board with Goalbook. Tomorrow, we have Apex and my view board again. We are also following up with all the feedback that we receive from each individual professional development session in collaborating to create deeper learning and uh future sessions to ensure that everybody's heard from creating um specific Google Classroom sessions for our fine arts department. So you'll see that coming out pretty soon where we're going to offer specific for our VAPA department, things like that. So that already, we've already offered a lot, and we're going to continue to get offer all the way up until the very first day of school.
So this is just a, a slide, just sharing with you that uh we'd hope to publish this information that we're going to share in just a few minutes with you uh is, is a total package of our reopening plan. And so I'm going to just do a quick shift over to that document. And let me see if I can make this a little bigger. Hopefully that, this is in a, a Word document, so I apologize for the, the scrolling. But we've put together a comprehensive plan. I also want to thank uh Ms. Darkins, who's been burning the candle at both ends, uh assisting and being part of all of our meetings so that um she could uh be able to help us uh articulate and uh share the story of BHUSD and our reopening plan. Um, it, the beginning in this will again be hopefully published by this Friday, but um just a, there's a quick note for me in the beginning. I do comparative because I think it's really important to know. Um, we've had a lot of challenges in our district and we continue to move forward in a very progressive manner. Uh, much like reconfiguration. And some of the obstacles that were in front of us, the one thing that we kept as our true north was uh the safety in education. And I feel like, you know, that, that's still in play for us today, even with this challenge, the challenge that we've been dealing with for the last four months and we continue to deal with. I think that that has truly been what has guided us moving forward, and it hasn't been perfect. Uh, but I believe that that has been the right approach. Um, and we've tackled challenges as they come along um in very much the same way. And so um reconfiguration was helpful uh as far as um the uh design methodology about how we move forward and how we do things, uh, because we constantly go back and revisit and we revise uh accordingly when um, uh, when that communication loop keeps occurring. So a couple of things, I just want to be clear about what's in this plan and then what's not in this plan. So um, we're going to talk just about the uh, the, the final options that we have for the fall now that we have uh information uh from the governor. Um, also, we're going to talk a little bit about uh the physical safety for students and staff, uh, the social emotional piece, which is uh incredibly important, um, and, and really needs to be, um, we need specific plans from, from each of our schools about how we're meeting um and exceeding the social emotional uh development for all of our students, because that's, uh, we hear loud and clear, that's, it's a big part of school. And um, and how are we going to ensure that we do that, you know, from a virtual perspective? Um, there's a lot of creative ideas out there. And then interestingly enough, with the governor's announcement, um, is, is being able to look at some metrics now, uh, which is we haven't been able to do before. I mean, there's been a lot of data out there, but, but they haven't, the data hasn't been used consistently to make decisions. And so we're looking forward to being able to look at that information um, uh, about what the future is going to look like in that transition back to the traditional classroom, uh, when and how that's done, uh, using some uh potential metrics that we'll share with you. Um, and also, we do get a lot of uh requests for um, you know, children and masks and um, you know, what are some strategies that we can do to help uh, you know, with students, some of our youngest learners uh for getting ready for that return? And I think you'll see in this plan, what's unique is it isn't just preparing for distance learning. And I know a lot of districts have done that, where it's just a reopening plan, but it's, it stops at just providing distance learning. Uh, our goal is to, again, use the metrics and to start preparing for that, that smooth transition uh to come back to school um, so that we are in the same place that we were before we left in um, in March. So what you won't find here, uh, and there's a variety of reasons why you won't find it, but I want to be upfront about the fact that um, there's not an exact date. And so we do get a lot of people asking, you know, can you just shoot for a date? And I think that it would be um not in our best interest to do that with this back and forth and speculation. So you will not see that. Governor Newsom has been very clear about the monitoring list, and this is very unique um, to have the governor come in and step in and provide this type of information and guidelines, because they usually uh like to leave it up to the local control. So um, it's interesting that, that he has come forward and he's provided some direction for us. But until we know about, more about the monitoring list, and, and, and he's been very clear about uh with fourteen days uh being off of that list before uh continuing on with something other than distance learning, that we can't give you that exact date right now. So the hybrid option, um, and, and I've, I've received some emails from people, oh, it's, you know, now we're not doing that. And, you know, I would say nothing's off the table right now, because we don't know what that transition's going to be. So we are following um the future public health orders. And so when the, the, the future public health orders are revised, and they will be, then we will look at that information to help look at how do we transition kids back in? And, and it may very well be that there is a hybrid version that we need to go to before we have all students back. Uh, but it's just too early to tell what that will be, and, and I'm not comfortable putting the district in a position where we share that information um, until we have a better idea of when and what that's going to look like. Um, the other issue is that with childcare, and, and I know that, you know, I've said this before, um, and, and I do care so much about our working families. Um, we are, we are doing everything that we can. We're reaching out to as many groups as we can to see if, if we can get some assistance with childcare. Uh, we realize that it's difficult and that not every childcare is, is going to be a good fit for every family. And there's a lot of variables involved, but we are non-stop working, trying to make connections so that we can offer parents some solutions and some options for childcare. So we'll, we'll get back to you on that, but it is a very active part of what we're doing every single day. So as, as you know, that through some of the presentations that we've been given, um, we're working with all of our uh state and local officials. Um, and, and, and many times, a, as I've said before, it's very confusing because it's guidelines. Um, and you'll get um different guidelines from, and recommendations from a lot of groups. And so it's very difficult to then determine what is kind of the rule. So even though we're working with everyone and every local and state, uh, you know, government official, um, it's the public health order that is, is what's driving what we're doing. But we are still staying involved with every, every arm of legislative bodies in the state uh for the latest information. And just our local stakeholders, of course, we were open to our meetings that we're having and the honest discussions that we're having. Um, the think tank, uh, we've been working with our teachers, with the options committee. Um, uh, we're, we're desperately trying to return emails, and I know that that's been very frustrating. Um, I, I know, and I'm going to tell you that I am trying to get back to as many people as I can. Um, you know, there's hundreds of emails in my email box, and I can tell you that I'm trying to get back to everybody as, as soon as I can. Um, of course, BHF, PTA, PTSA, they, they've just been so supportive and so uh, we're keeping those avenues of communication open. Um, talked a little bit before about the social emotional development. We have a very strong relationship with the Maple Counseling Center. And so we are working with them uh to incorporate some virtual services so that, that uh, that our parents and also um, our students are provided uh every opportunity that can be afforded to them. Uh, and so that's kind of a new step that we're making going into the future. Some of the evolving areas, which of course is a lot, um, you know, we're looking at being able to staff uh classes for uh looking to see, we're coming back. So we're, we're looking to see what, what will that look like when we come back? So I, again, don't want people to think that it's these two final options and that we're done, and we're just going to wait and see what happens. We are actively working on transition plans so that when it's safe, that we start to bring students back. But it has to be done in, in a very um strategic way that is safe for everyone involved. And so I just want you to know, we're not stopping just because there's two plans now. We're working very hard to be able to bring people back uh in a very safe but timely manner. Um, and a lot of that, of course, will depend on uh the um, the metrics that we'll be using um in the future. So we're looking at a lot of the campus operations. This is information that um, uh, we're going to provide you with when we uh, we, we're going to hone in on the uh, the physical reopening plan. Um, and we will be able to share that with you. And again, we're working with the think tank to fine tune some of those recommendations. I talked about childcare. Um, there is a lot of training that's happening. You know, there are new products that are on the market for COVID-19 and um, uh, disinfecting and sanitizing. And so um, it, anybody that uses these materials have to be trained. So, so everybody is being trained. We've got a free and reduced lunch. Um, uh, families that we have to talk about how we're going to do meal distribution. Um, and so there's a lot of work there to try to make that um as, as easy as possible for our families. Um, we are securing PPE equipment. Um, uh, you know, I've been working with Faridodes about the uh PPE equipment and working with BHF, and that's been a great start and a great conversation. Uh, we're also securing some of that uh, the PPE from the state. And so we do not have that yet, but it's in transition. We've already uh requested the, the number that we need for our PPE, and that's an ongoing effort. Um, we are securing the cleaning materials and, and where we're putting Plexiglas, um, the, having thermometers for symptom checks. Um, all of those things are happening every single day, and uh, and we're really moving forward on, on having those items ready. Um, and now we're preparing the procedures behind each of them. So phasing people in, that's a priority for us. I will continue to update the board on our progress as we uh continue to look at what those metrics will be to bring students back. Um, the governor has mentioned as well, um, that addressing our IEP and five or four requirements for our students and those services has to be a priority. Um, we are looking at, um, you know, how do we provide students with the right materials uh in, in classrooms? And so we're working with PTAs to make sure, um, you know, how can we provide students with uh what they need if they're going to be at home? Um, we're looking at the professional development, um, and that includes a lot of tech um, uh, support and, and devices. Uh, Mr. Seaman just talked about um the summer courses, and I just bumped into a teacher today, Jenna Lightner, and she was telling me about um, you know, her training. And so I just want to uh thank our teachers for um, you know, signing up this summer. Uh, no one is enjoying summer vacation. Uh, people are hard at work and our teachers are signing up for this training. And and we certainly appreciate all of that happening during the summer. We certainly know that people are working on new lesson plans and new ways of delivering their instruction. And so there's a lot of work that's happening this summer. So I want to thank our teachers for that. So we're looking at a lot of different, you know, the technology purchases, the setup, the PD, and then also just partnering with our our parent organizations so that that we're on the same page and in just such a hardworking and gracious group that's willing to help us in any way. And we're just fortunate to be able to have that relationship. And so those conversations are are ongoing. Some of those metrics that I talked about is there's just so much data. And, you know, and this is true for teaching, too. Sometimes there's just so much data, you become really data rich. And you have to focus on what's going to be good to move you forward successfully. And so that's what we're doing now because there's so much data available, whether it's looking at what the outbreaks are. As I just mentioned, there's 500 cases of COVID-19 in Beverly Hills. And I remember going back to the end of February when there was, when they reported the first COVID case. And it was like, you know, it was headline news, it was everywhere. And now there's 500. So, you know, we've got to look to see what those metrics are moving forward and look at some other factors, too. Because there's there's going to be flu. And so are we going to be looking at, you know, the hospitalization data? Are we going to be looking at data for how many people have been tested? The community outbreaks? And then, of course, we're also looking at what those the the contact tracing, what that's going to be. Because that's that's a big part of what is required of us in the public health order is that when somebody is has a positive outcome, that we have a lot of work to do to ensure that we are informing everybody that has been around that that particular person. So we're starting, as I mentioned before, getting ready for for people to come back. We have to have these procedures written now, and we're starting to use this information to help us get there. On the expectations from the governor, I put out a video on Friday that basically summarized what those expectations are. And it's, you know, it was really confusing because is as the governor, he is, he's talking to two different groups of people. So he's talking to those that are on the monitoring list that will be reopening and only distance learning. But then he's also looking at and talking with people that are not on the monitoring list. And so there was a lot of discussion in his press release about how are you going to handle the students that you do have coming back to school? Because some school districts are actually bringing students back in, most into a hybrid or all virtual option. And so I tried to summarize for us on Friday what that meant for our school district. Some things that he is requiring, of course, is that there has to be meaningful instruction, that there is rigorous distance learning. The daily interaction that's live with our teachers is required and must take place and other students. And so he's he's mentioned too that, you know, that that's a big factor of going to school is being able to see, you know, all the students in your class. And then really, the idea behind this, where he's going with this instruction piece and the meaningful and rigorous is that it become that it's challenging and that it mimic and mirror what's happening every day in our classes as much as possible. And then, of course, our our English language learner students and also our special education students that that the requirement to adapt to, you know, providing those services to students and providing them what they need. And I feel good about what we're doing in those areas, especially some of the conversations that are taking place for what we're going to be doing in the fall. So some of the other expectations, now, this is again, this is what we're working on right now. So I don't want this to confuse what I was saying about distance learning. But it's important to to be able to differentiate because I think that people need to understand that this reopening plan is just that. We are, we are starting to look for, how do we transition people back and when? And it may be that we are looking for, it may be after school organizations or clubs. Before we start, we might move into a hybrid option during the day. All of that will be directed to us by the public health order. But I just want you to know, we're going to be preparing scenarios so that we can share that with our Board of Education about what are some ways to move forward. So there's many options and choices in the future on how we begin to open up. We know that right now there is plans in place for symptom checking, and that's staff and students. Right now, the the distancing, and it's interesting that they've, they're starting to change some of their terminology the more they know about the virus. And so some of the language is starting to change from being socially distanced by six feet to physically distanced by six feet. And so it's interesting that even their own terminology is starting to change about what their expectations are. We're looking at testing, how is that done? You know, and a lot of this is evolving because it's, you know, even some of the testing that's being done now is being delayed. And there is, we're not getting quick results. And we're being told that there are many new tests on the horizon that will give immediate results. And we're hoping that that is something that happens sooner than later so that when and if need be, we're ready to do that and and provide those tests when necessary. So we're moving on with a lot of this information just about the transition. You know, we are prepared to, we worked with the think tank about looking at what an isolation room is, what it looks like to have somebody come into a room and then provide transportation home, whether it's a student or staff. And there's a variety of scenarios that can happen, and we're actually walking through each of them. That's why in the video you saw that we were actually at our schools. And there's some pretty, you know, pretty strict guidelines right now on on if you have multiple cases that are in a school that they're they're setting us up for if there's clusters, that there's possible closures. And and if there's multiple an outbreak within the school, there is even the result because of siblings and people working and transferring to buildings that that an entire district may be closed. So we're working with a lot of that information and a lot of that data to see what that would look like and what that communication would be if that happened. So I won't go through all of this, but I just, you know, I, it's really important that people understand the public health order. It's, it will change, it will revise. You know, we're getting word now that that it's very possible that the County of Los Angeles is is looking at a a change where it's going backwards to a safer at home model because of the rising cases in LA County. And so, you know, we're watching that every day, we're looking. But this this public health order will be revised on a consistent basis. And I just want to assure you, you know, I've gone through a lot of this before, and I did on the video as well, that 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 it's our job to to meet and exceed all of these areas. And we we are working on that, we will do that. And a lot of this will become part of that that physical reopening plan, which will be kind of an appendix to, you know, this particular plan. And Mr. Seaman?
Yep, so I'll go ahead and jump in here. Just in review, one of the things that has not changed from previous study sessions and conversations is the Independent Learning Center. That is one of the options. And even as we receive families that are either asking to be removed from the list and have been removed, we are still seeing an increase. Currently, right now, we're at 13% of our student population is enrolled in the Independent Learning Center. We have 300 in, or 3,367 students as of this morning, with 441 of them enrolled into the Independent Learning Center. Just as a review, the Independent Learning Center was a semester long obligation. So it typically was those families that seek that secure kind of start in deadline. In the Independent Learning Center, just as a review, it is that. It uses the word independent. So the students will have a one hour appointment assigned with a BHUSD teacher and then have four opportunities throughout the week to log into and participate in a multi-student tutoring session, both in math, science, social studies, and English. For the elementary level, and that's for the 612 for the elementary level, students will be assigned a grade level teacher that will deliver, as you can see, for TK through second, up to five to 10 minutes per subject each day. And then obviously, for the three through fifth grade, 20 to 30 minutes. In addition to some individual support, we are offering still all the social emotional learning and supports to the Independent Learning Center students. The other option that we are currently in the process of talking through, last but not least, I apologize, Dr. Bregge. If the application does close, it does close at 8:00 AM on Monday. The reason we need to close is because it's an individualized program. We will have to roster each of those students individually into the coursework, make sure that they are trained, understand the process, and are equipped to start school at the start. So the application does close, and there's the website in case you want to enroll. The other option is the Live at BHUSD. And you'll see the first bullet point is that we are consistently addressing the daily live interaction at home learning or at home online using a BHUSD device. It does run Monday through Friday. At this time, we are working with our unions collaboratively on some of the more details of that plan. Right now, it will be, obviously, we're proposing going into the fall, virtual learning, having teachers livestream instruction daily, having students follow their current schedules. So in the middle school, students would have on Monday, periods one through six. On Tuesdays, they would have period seven through five, et cetera. We will also honor still the late start Wednesday. The reason we need that is for the continued professional development for our staff. Also, the two early release Thursdays each month for the high school. We will follow the current schedule as closely as possible. And I will kind of hand that over to Dr. Bregge.
So and actually, we'll go right into Ms. Chisholm.
Okay, thank you. Can can you scroll to page 17? That's where mine starts, Dr. Bregge.
Yes, and this is just a, this is a, we get a lot of questions about, you know, young students and wearing masks. And so, and of course, that is a concern. You know, that it, there are some strategies and some, we're going to work with parents to ensure that, again, when students are transitioned back, that that we're going to spend some time working with the best way to work with students and wearing a mask. Okay, this is just some information about sports, which is has been moved to December. And I apologize. So in technology support, we've talked about that already, that this is, you know, we've provided students with device. We're very fortunate in our district that we are a one to one device per student. So that we are, we are way ahead of the curve is having that accessibility for our students. And and one thing I want to reemphasize that 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 we are looking at holding our classes that mirrors the bell schedule. And this is a governor expectation, but it's also an expectation, I know, of our board and our administration as well as to is to to create an environment that is as closely possible what is happening in the classroom so that it's an easy transition for our students back. And I've already talked about the Maple Counseling Center. I'm fortunate to sit on their Board of Directors. And the partnership that we have is super strong. And I'm very proud that they have really gotten creative on what their accessibility is virtually. And so, you know, that that is not only available for just for parents, which we've sent out previously, but we're also putting into place right now a lot of structures and supports for our students. The physical safety for students and staff, this is something I've already talked about. You know, we've really been looking at putting into place, you know, the safety of our students and staff. You know, I can't, you know, under, I don't want to underestimate it all when I say meet and exceed because I, it, we are putting together such protocols and procedures that we've never had before in place for cleaning and sanitizing. And so that'll be part of that physical reopening plan. And we're going to share with you the products that we're using, how often things are being done, what areas are being cleaned. And we're very excited about being able to to share that with with everyone. Let's see, and I will let Ms. Chisholm go right ahead.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. So we've had a lot of questions regarding how students who receive extra support, either through an IEP and which is an individual education plan or 504 plan, how they will be supported in distance learning. So we put together some some information to help the board and parents understand how our programs will be administered through distance learning. So in either either model, whether the parents choose ILC or Live at BHUSD, special education teachers and related service providers will be providing both the specialized academic instruction, which is with, which is the teaching that occurs in special education and the related services as outlined on each student's IEP. As we discussed previously in our last study session and several times before that, the the state nor the federal government have not relaxed any of the guidelines that apply to students in special education. So we are still mandated to provide the the services and supports listed in each student's IEP to that level. So we are prepared to do that coming, starting in August. What does that look like? For our students who are in what we call our RSP or Resource Specialist Program, case managers and service providers will coordinate with times with the general education teachers to provide the instructional minutes mandated on each student's IEP. So think, think like when you're in the brick and mortar setting. A student is pulled out to go work on either English Language Arts, Math, Science, whatever is indicated on their IEP. This will happen, this will continue to happen. It would just happen virtually instead of in person. Our students who are in special day classes, SDC, they will receive the majority of their instruction from their special education teacher. And then the subjects that they participate in general education, they will receive in general education either through the ILC or the Live at BHUSD. Where we're having significant discussion and having to be very creative is around our assessments, meaning our triennial assessments, which are our three year reevaluations and our initial request for assessment for special education. Because these tests are are individual in nature and usually happen in person, we're trying to, we're having to be, we're having to be creative, we're having to figure out how to do this virtually. So I've been working over the summer to find out, to find different ways to do this. We have several psychologists, school psychologists who have attended trainings. And we will be setting up virtual assessments to start the school year and then transition to in-person assessments when it's feasible. But of course, we have to adhere adhere to the local and state authority guidelines regarding in-person contact with students for students and staff. But we will be, we will start processing our triennials from last, the end of last year and the initial assessment request starting in August. We will address any specific concerns or individual concerns regarding students to talk with parents to figure out how to best tailor each student's distance learning program through the IEP process. So case carriers will will hold, virtually hold IPs with each family to figure out how to make the program work for each student. And lastly, there's been a lot of questions and concern about whether or not we could bring in our, have in-person instruction for our students with significant needs, our most significant needs students, particularly like our prime students. While there's been a lot of discussion about that, at this time, until we're able to meet the governor's mandate for reopening, we will not be able to have any students on campus until we meet that requirement to have, to be off that monitoring list for 14 consecutive days. So our, all our students will start online or have virtual programs. PBIS, what is that going to look like virtually? We are still, we are still implementing, this is year three, we're in tier one still, year three. We will continue via an online model. Remember, the purpose of PBIS is to build and maintain relationships with students to enhance academic outcomes. How will we do that? We'll have virtual behavior reinforcement tools. We'll have, we'll talk about ways to get the desired behavior, motivation for students to participate in their classes, to 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 complete their assignments, to interact with their teachers and other students, to help foster that online community for students. And then the last piece, as we've been talking a lot about, is the social emotional wellness for students and staff. So, you know, it's, this is a interesting, interesting, interesting time for all of us. So, you know, as well, as well as So, you know, as, as well as our students, we have to think about our staff. And we just put this in here so that everyone knows that we do have support for staff and they can work with Dr. Horvath in a human resources, if they have any questions. We do have a support program for staff. If there's anxiety about contracting the virus, being on campus, you know, working in a virtual environment, anything, that support is there. Our social emotional program is going to live in student services, but it is definitely a joint effort between student services and ed services. What we're looking at are leveraging our school psychologists, who I supervise, and our school counselors, who Dustin Seaman supervises, to, and our, and our teachers and everyone else to help deliver social emotional learning lessons, to cover things like bullying, cyberbullying, coping skills, substance abuse, there'll be depression, anything that our students may be experiencing in the virtual environment, that, because they're the same types of challenges they have on campus. So we'll be working with them to deliver these lessons during advisory periods and other, other opportunities that we have throughout the day. We are also talking about, we've also made arrangements, Dr. Bregge has, has discussed about this. The Maple Center will be working with the Norman Aid Center. And instead of it being a nine through 12th grade program now, it will extend down to the middle school. So it will be a sixth through 12th grade program. And then we'll consider, we'll continue with our college and career lessons via NAVIAs.
And thank you, Ms. Chisholm. So I, I get to end with, with the thanks part, and we don't get to do this enough. But there, since March and April, there has been ongoing conversations, you know, and we are making recommendations and decisions since, since last April about what's going to, to happen. And we're still continuing to do that with, with full integrity in, in, in making the best decisions we can with the information that we have. And so whether it's teachers on the options committee, or whether it's, we have a small number of staff, but it's mostly community members on our think tank. You know, we could not be able to put a plan like this together without you. And we're not afraid to ask for that help, and it's been really enlightening. Our, our cabinet, the, our principals, just our entire leadership team have really stepped up this summer, just like they did last summer with reconfiguration. This was supposed to be the summer where they are, earn a little bit of time off. But there's, you know, that's not happening with all of the challenges that are, that are, that are going on right now. So I want to thank everybody involved in this ongoing situation. And I also want to thank our teachers that are working with our bargaining unit. We really are having great conversations at the table. It's very positive and very proud to be a part of that team and having discussions about what's best for kids. Typically, when you're in a bargaining session, there's lots of tension and there's, you know, there's, there's this, you know, I have to win attitude, and I'm telling you, that's not there. And I've never seen anything like it. I, I think as I, as I end this presentation, I want to say there's a lot of hard reflecting that's going on in these sessions when we meet with our teachers. And it's not just our teachers reflecting about what their practices are, but it's also the administration and the responsibility that we have as well as we move forward. And it's just, you know, they're exhausting, it's a lot of time. So I want to thank everybody for their time. But most importantly, the conversations have been quite beneficial and they've been honest and authentic. And I think that they were really moving forward so that we can provide that specificity that parents are looking for in finalizing these plans. But I feel like there is enough to be able to provide the forge of education just to move forward with these two final plans. And at this time, we are open to any questions that you have. I know some principals have joined us as well as cabinet as well. And Mrs. Hacker, I, I turn the meeting back over to you and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge, and thank you to the administrative team for presenting this very thorough presentation for the board. Let's see, at this time, unless there's somebody from the cabinet who wants to jump in, I think everybody pretty much spoke. If there's, if you want to say something before I turn it over to the board, please raise your hand and I will acknowledge you. Okay, so we're going to start with Mr. Margot. If you have any questions, Mr. Margot, or comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Hacker. Okay, first thing I'd like to say is that we recognize all the letters, like Mrs. Hacker said, from the teachers, faculty, staff, classified. Your comments are not lost on us. We take this stuff seriously, we read it intensely, and we, we, you know, it's discussed at the proper times. But just know that we understand what you're all saying, it's not lost on us. I, I jotted a bunch of notes down, so let me go through this. For the BHUSD live, live at BHUSD, sorry, I have to memorize that. Are we planning on the contingency that if we do go back at some point during the semester, that parents who still feel uncomfortable about sending their kids will be able to continue under that model and they will still be broadcasting? I'm assuming so, because I don't think there'll be any point where we are, teachers are going to be broadcasting to a full class in, in the next semester. My guess is that it would still be a cohort model, because they would reduce the number of kids. So therefore, we'd have to keep the, the ability to reach kids digitally. Is that, Mr. Dr. Bregge is nodding yes, I just want to confirm that.
Yeah, I just want to say that it's so much of that is contingent on, you know, what the, those restrictions are. But I can't imagine that, you know, on a Friday, you know, something from public health isn't going to come and say, you know, oh, this is, you know, everything is great, you can open again on Monday. So we're preparing for what that transition looks like. And so we want to work with our teachers, because that's, that's so critical to the success of the rest of the school year, whenever that's going to be. And I know that our teachers, we've had some conversations and they agree that they, that that is, they want it to be such a seamless transition that we're preparing for different scenarios, but we don't know yet exactly what that is. But it most likely will be something, as you're talking about, some sort of hybrid transition back.
So there'll always be an option for someone who just does not want to put their kid back on campus until there's either a vaccine or a treatment, a safe treatment. I just want to confirm that.
Well, I, I would say this, that it's so unpredictable, Mr. Margot, that I, I can't, I don't know when. It's really difficult. I, I think the, the reason the ILC was designed was for those families that knew, you know, it just, that we're, we're just, you know, emphatic about ensuring that, like, they, they don't want to be put in a position of, you know, when is that transition back? Because we have so many families that are ready to transition as soon as possible, when it's safe. But we also have some families that have said, look, there's a lot, you know, there are situations in my own home and there's, like, so that was designed, that all virtual option was designed for those families that, that did not want to have to rely on when the metrics say we can transition back.
Right, and I understand the concept of the I in the ILC. I do appreciate that. What I'm saying is that if I'm, if I'm willing to do the other option, the, the, the live option, which I think obviously from the statistics will be the preferred option, I would still like to know if there are parents that feel uncomfortable at any point. You know, California opened up too early anyway and got us in this position. So they may open up again too early and we may be closing again. So I'm just saying, we need to be flexible with that plan. I understand the ILC works on its own, but our own, our own staff, administration needs to be flexible within our own plan to be able to say, yeah, you know what? You could stay at home, it's okay, we're still going to continue to deliver the education as we've been doing, however long it takes. I just, I, I think it would be good to, that people felt comfortable about that. Then if that's the direction it goes, because right now, California has shown to kind of jump the gun on, on reopening stuff. So that may be the case. You know, if we have the two weeks declining numbers and they decide to take us off that monitoring list, well, you know, we're part of LA County. Beverly Hills may very well be part of the two-week declining numbers, but we'll never know, because we're part of LA County. And since we are, we have to go by that, that the county rules. So I just think we need to, we need to be able to accommodate that if the situation calls for that. Okay, moving on. I, I strongly feel that as far as the plan, there was one comment made and it said, significant improvements have been made from home learning two point O. So what improvements? That's a pretty bold statement that you had in the presentation, Dr. Bregge. And I, I, since this is the first time the board is seeing your presentation, I'd like to know, oh, that's great. What improvements are we talking about?
So we are, that's the, you know, we're in discussions with our teachers. So, you know, through an MOU process, so I can't speak specifically about those yet, because I don't want to impact the positive conversations that we're having. But I will tell you this, at the, you know, at the, the risk of sharing probably too much already, that I have not met a teacher yet that has said that, look, we, you know, we, we've learned from that experience. I think the teachers are starting to realize too, there was a lot of inconsistency. You know, there are teachers that, that did more than expected. And there, there were some teachers that, that didn't do what was expected. And there was a variety of reasons behind those things. But I think that, you know, we were, we were really coming from a different place. And so, and there's a responsibility there, I think, not only for the teacher, but I think that even from the administration now, you know, it's, you know, we have to have the ability to be able to work with our teachers to ensure that, that, that effective teaching and learning is happening. And, and I can share with you that those conversations are happening. So we're already a step ahead with, with that live instruction piece and where we're moving. And I can confidently say that to you, because that's not, the teachers are not disagreeing with that, that piece. It's not only required by the governor, but even before it was. Teachers are, are, are on board with providing live instruction to kids. And, and they, they realize that that's, that's going to be part of the future.
Thank you for, for flushing that out a little bit. I think it's important for everybody and in our world and the community to understand that we are really striving for something unique and different when we talk about live at BHUSD. It's, it's not enough, you know, people say, well, the other districts in our county are, are not doing this or are doing this. We always should be fighting to set ourselves apart from everybody, everybody. We, that's the reason why people came here in the first place, was because our schools were at that bar, set that bar. And no matter what situation we're in, we should continue to set that bar. We should take advantage of the technology we invested in, whether it winds up being in the classroom or at home, or however that works, to give these tools to our faculty, to our teachers, and pass that on to our students so they get the absolute top-notch best experience in their education. There might be even ways to use this as an opportunity to retool the way we deliver education. We're, we're being forced to physically change the way we deliver it, but the practice itself, we can take a hard look at and find ways to be more successful so that when we come out of this pandemic, we, we will all have grown better for it. And this is, I think, the opportunity to make that happen. And I, I, as at least in my seat, will continue to push for whatever that instruction, that live instruction looks like, it will be better than anybody else around us, that I want to fight for. The last thing I was going to say is I had spoken to, there were some teachers I spoke into that, that, some letters that weren't read, but I don't think they were intended to be read, that we received about teachers that want to utilize their classrooms successfully. They think they could do a better job. And I, I don't, I don't think that anybody's going to prohibit teachers from taking advantage of their classrooms if that particular classroom will have, foster a better outcome. Finally, you've mentioned childcare as part of the thing. And I, I had been contacted by a parent, active parent, who was talking about doing pods, childcare pods, where, where families would get together in groups of five and meet. Each family would host the five kids once a week. They would be quarantined, so they would be staying safe and healthy. They could get checked, they could do temperature checks and all that amongst themselves. But they would rotate during a course of a week so that four out of the days, you could actually go to work, you can actually have, be able to, to go to work. I thought it was a magnificent idea. I think it's going to happen with or without us. And I, I'm hoping that we can play a part in making that effort successful. And a lot of that would have to do with, what it wound up having to do with scheduling, especially for middle school students and high school students, if that's the case. Maybe some K-five students who may need the, the younger ones would need the supervision. So whatever we can do to help that along and get involved with the parents that, that are requesting that, I think it would help us. I'm not giving direction, I'm only making a suggestion. My colleagues and I, my colleagues can chime in later on about that. So I just was, was contacted by a parent, wanted to bring that up. So that's it for my comments for now, we'll go through the horse show, maybe I'll chime back in later. Thank you, Mrs. Hacker.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. I want to apologize, I skipped student board member, Mr. Krishanian. So I am going to now grant him the floor and I apologize once again.
No worries at all. I'd like to start off by saying a thank you to everybody involved with just making everything happen. Dr. Bregge, all the board members, the think tank, all the, everyone on the options committee, just everybody, I know I'm not naming everyone, but I know there's so much more. Thank you guys for everything, you know, there's many hours put into making sure that we get everything right and making sure that we can please as many people as we can. And their work should not be taken lightly, like they do a lot. Next, one question that I had is, since we're going to be online and not physically in the classroom, is curriculum going to be cut? Like, are we gonna, is the curriculum for some classes going to be cut, all classes, AP classes? That's just.
Yeah, no, there, there's no expectation of streamlining or removing any of the curriculum that should be delivered for 2021 school year, so no.
Okay, thank you.
And then. Want to add to that, because I think this is the, because you had, had mentioned, you know, just how hard everyone's working. And I think that it's, you know, we were in a different place before, because we weren't sure for how long that was going to go, the physical closures. But it is something like, like, you know, as a former teacher and that everything you do, so, so while the curriculum, you, you still have to meet requirements for standards, for mastery for students, it's, it's every, every single thing that our teachers do has to be recreated, redesigned. And so it's, it's not about cutting like any of the curriculum, but it's just about getting creative about thinking, everything that you do has to be delivered, you know, virtually. And so, and that's, that's tricky for a lot of different subject areas and, and topic areas. So, so I think Mr. Seaman's right on point, you know, there, there's no intention to make any shortcuts there. But I just want people to stop and think about that really every single thing you do is, as a teacher, has to be redelivered and, and recreated.
I see. And then another question that I had, I love the idea about the pods and how like we can have five kids just being taken care of, that way parents can go to school, I mean, to work. Another, I just wanted to ask, since I know like some other school districts are doing it, would it be possible to have elementary in school and everybody else online? Since I know like it's harder for younger kids to learn online.
So that's a great question. I, the, the, the governor and his latest order has really taken out of the equation any differentiation that we could make at the, at, at the, the district level. And it's because that LA County is such a hotspot that they're not going to make any considerations for any age group because of the, the high number of cases. So they, that, that luxury has been removed. And that's why I think our work going in the future is so unpredictable as well. Because, you know, that might be something that they do as we begin to transition students back. We just don't know what that is yet. But as of right now, being on the monitoring list, it removes us from having any, any, any student, you know, on our school grounds.
I see. Okay, thanks for clearing that up. Other than that, I'd just like to say that I think both the options, just like Mr. Margot said, I think that the virtual at, at BHUSD will be more favored. But I think both the options are going to be great. And I think that we will definitely, I think all the teachers and everybody involved wants the best for all their students. And I know everyone's going to put in all, everything that they can to making sure that this year is the best that we can make it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, okay, so Mel, it's your turn, Mr. Spitz, sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Hacker. First, I want to compliment staff. I think this presentation addresses every factor and every aspect of starting the 2020-21 school year. And I think it takes into consideration all of the concerns and objectives that have been expressed by board members at our study sessions that we've had. At our study sessions and that we've had. I have no questions that Mr. Margot didn't ask. But I do, I really do want to see that performing and group work courses. Will be held to the extent possible. And as soon as possible. Because those courses, although they're elective, they're a significant part of this district's curriculum. And they're a significant part of the educational outcomes for our students. So. I, I really haven't heard about, about those courses being addressed. And I hope that, I hope they will be given full consideration. Thank you.
And Mr. Spitz, let me just answer that for you, just so that that is part of our consideration as we begin to look at. What the reopening looks like, how is that done? Because part of this needs to be done in a way that's very intentional. And so, and it may be starting with those clubs and activities and, and where we can still follow the protocols that are necessary. But also you have to start somewhere and in having, you know, a large group of students, even a cohort is still, that's still considered to be a large gathering. We might want to, when it's appropriate and safe, to start off smaller. And that's do something like you just mentioned, where it's some of the performing groups. And how that's going to be handled as a kind of introductory phase into bringing people back.
Thank you.
This is Marcus.
Okay, I iterate all the comments about the work that the cabinet, the administration has done. It's amazing how many things they've been able to address and to plan ahead. And even with anything that can happen, there'll always be something that'll happen. But I am really pleased with all the facets of what they have looked at. I think it's really been amazing and they're really to be congratulated. I have a couple of comments, one of the comments that we have always wanted our district to be sort of the. Light tower, the light tower of the, to do well in the technology. And I think that one of the outcomes of this particular pandemic that we're facing is that our teachers are being quickly thrown into the mix. Of using technology more than they've ever had before. And I think we are really going to come out ahead with that because we're providing everything that they need. And they will be really ahead of everybody else in terms of technology teaching from the classroom. So I think from the little bit of bad that we've had, this is something that's really going to be a good thing. Because they're really going to be well trained and ready to use technology in ways that they never thought of before. So I think that is something that is, is a positive. I, I'd like to go back to the question that Mr. Margot raised, it has to do about the ILC and so on. I'm concerned that people understand exactly who's going to be doing the ILC, even though it's independent learning. I think they may want to know who are the teachers that are going, I know it's, it's digital, so a lot of it is already prescribed. But who are the teachers that are going to be working with them? And will they be Beverly Hills teachers? And I think that that's important for them to understand. So that would be a question that needs to be answered. Also, the other thought that I had was if right now, the people who come back and are going for the. Live, live learning in Beverly Hills. As, as it moves along and we start to move toward a hybrid or bringing students back. Many of them still may not feel completely comfortable with that. Is there going to be a way for them to stay at home learning? And not go to the ILC, mind you, but to stay with the program as it existed before. We were able to bring the students back. So that's the question that I think, because that people should know that if that's what they're going to choose, that that's going to be something that. Needs to be addressed. I, I see you're shaking your head a little bit, Dr. Brighi, you want to answer that just before I go on?
Sure, so I, I think that it's. You know, I, I'll just be completely transparent here. The, 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 the teaching that, that occurs, e- even when we begin to transition students back. Where you've got, you know, possibly, you know, a hybrid option here, where you've got, you know, maybe your cohorts. Because, you know, perhaps social or physical distancing is still six feet. You know, that, that may be a way to transition back. But I think that it's, you know, if we start to look at, and again, I don't know what the, you know, where we're going to be. But if, 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 if we're at a place where, you know, the majority, we're, we're ready to move back into a classroom setting. I think it's going to be really difficult for our teachers. If there are a few kids that are wanting to remain at home. Because it, it, the, the, as I mentioned, everything has to be redesigned and recreated. So to, to say, how long will we do that? Is that going to be for the whole year? Is that going to be for two years? I, I think that it's the idea behind the ILC is, is really designed for those families that know for sure that they don't want to wait for. That transition date. I think we're asking a lot of our teachers, if there are a handful of students that, that want to stay at home. That it's going to be really difficult for a teacher to have a full classroom with just a few students at home. That will change the instruction and the delivery of the entire class. So it's, and I realize that it, it would be, I would love a world where, you know, it would be, you know, just as easy to do that. But what begins to happen is, and I'm just speaking honestly, is that it, it really changes the instruction then for that teacher. If they're in front, if they have students that are directly in front of them, because you're really tied to then, you know, a live camera. Or you're, you're tied to then technology instead of being able to, you know, use the space within your classroom. I mean, it, it just becomes then a different experience for those students that are at home as well.
Okay, and I think most of the comments have been made, that the question that have been asked. And so I'm, I just want to make one more comment, and that has to do with something that Mr. Margot also said. That I read every single letter that was sent to me, I can't answer them all. And I, I just want the teachers to know that I really took the heart what they said. And about the, the flexibility of teaching from home or from. School, so I just want you to know that I did read your comments and I really took them to heart. And I think that, that I appreciate all of their comments and their, their messages that they gave me. So I think that's about it. I, I'm glad that we were to identify finally what the options are going to be, so there can be no confusion. People know what's to be expected, they can see what's going to happen, and I think that's very important. So I think they did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, so it's my turn, and again, I want to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed by my board members. As it relates to being appreciative of today's presentation and the detail and work that has gone on behind the scenes. To provide such thorough information. And, you know, this, this is, I know it's been said many times before, these, these are very unprecedented times that we are living. And information is always so ever changing and fluid. And so I do understand and I sympathize with parents, teachers, students who are. Who are a part of this school community, who are, who have very valid questions, who want answers. But I would just stress that a lot of this information continues to change on a daily basis. And so I do appreciate Dr. Brighi's comments about, you know, we really can't answer when we're going to return to hopefully hybrid or in-person. Model, because we just don't have that information, given the governor's statements that came last week. Or just last Friday, a few days ago. But, you know, I think it's important to really finalize this opportunity today to, to really disclose here. We have two options and we've identified it and you have the option to decide what works best for your child. With that said, I, I do have a question for Destin. Being that a lot of parents and students planned academically for this school year. And, you know, none of us could have imagined that California would find its, you know, itself where we are today. I think we all felt that we were going to get through this and by the time summer was over, we would somehow be back at school. I, I know that I was one of those individuals who I thought, you know, California is going to be this, right? Because they told us the summer was here, we have good weather in California. And, you know, you, you try to be positive in your thinking. But here we are, and so a lot of parents and students plan their fall with that thinking, right? So Mel just touched on this, there's a lot of. Activities that take place, a lot of electives that students choose based on what they anticipate they will walk away with in their experience. And so because we're now going to a virtual model, I wonder if parents or students have a change of heart. And that maybe that elective class, because it's a virtual type of, of, of way that the class will be delivered. They, they now are opting for a different class. How flexible are we or are we not flexible? I know that I can't imagine all the students want to change their electives. But if there is that 5%, 3% of students who, you know, just want to change gears now. Because again, we're going to a virtual model, is that something that we've thought of, Destin, I'm not sure.
So regardless of COVID-19, our students always have the opportunity to possibly kind of redirect the plane. Right before the start of the school year. We staff so tightly in BHUSD, meaning we're very fiscally responsible. When we build our master schedule, we start doing it in November. And so when you look at most of our elective coursework, whether that be orchestra, all the way to world language. Most of those classes are scheduled to contract numbers. So there aren't a ton of room or space for a lot of switches and changes. However, based off individual need, we can always work with that individual family within the first 10 days of the school year. And that has always been practice and policy within BHUSD. Is if a student decides over the summer that they find out from a post-secondary option. Hey, I, I need to add Spanish three to my schedule. That student can work within their school counselor and we'll do the best that we can. Because remind you that we built the schedule during that second semester. And we'll always try to find that seat or rework that individual schedule for that student. However, there will be limitations, and that's why I just wanted to give all the information. Is when we build the master schedule, we by design, you know, do it tight and fiscally responsible of. We don't have a lot of classes that have more than five to six open seats in them. If that makes sense, but absolutely, we, we, we are here for the students. I encourage them to reach out to their school counselors, they can also reach out to me, principals and assistant principals, all of us can assist in that process.
Great, thank you for that. I just want to just ask again the question, and I believe Mr. Margot asked the question, but I want to make sure the parents hear the answer. For parents who are choosing to go on the virtual model, to decide for the virtual model, if they decide, you know, three weeks, four weeks. Into that model, that they now want to make the switch to ILC, I'm hearing that that is not an option, correct? There has to be a commitment.
Yeah, so for the ILC, there has to be a commitment, because once we enroll them into the curriculum. We essentially are pulling them out of their schedule. We're not refilling that student's seat, we're pulling them out. But we are scheduling them and enrolling them into their courses, obviously through either Google Classroom, Apex Learning. With the supervision of that independent teacher. And we, by the end of the semester, will get to the exact same finish point. That the brick and mortar or the virtual teacher will be delivering. However, in between, depending on the student individual pacing or the class pacing. There could either be an educational gap where maybe the classroom was going a bit faster than the individual student. Because the individual student needed additional support. Or the individual student might actually be further along than where that, that class is. And so by doing this semester commitment, we're all getting to the finish line at the same time. It's the race in between that's going to be at different paces. And so that's what we want to prevent from happening.
Well, thank you, those are my questions. And again, just to reiterate what Mrs. Marcus already said, and I believe all my colleagues before me is that. You know, I really do appreciate on a very personal level, the emails that come through from all of our stakeholders. And, you know, I don't think any of us feel, and I will speak for the board, that we are, you know. Taking any of this lightly or that we favor one stakeholder over another. I, 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 you know, I feel equally responsible for students, parents. Our staff, teachers, staff members at the office, everyone. And I take these, I take my, 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 my position here very serious. And I try to listen to all of your concerns. And, you know. I really am listening with an open mind and open heart, and I believe that everyone on the board does also. And so please know that sometimes we can't just discuss things, because as Dr. Brighi says, we are having positive negotiations. And a lot of that falls under that umbrella. So, but I hope that you understand that we're trying to resolve all the issues and concerns that are on your minds. Because they definitely weigh heavy on ours as well, and we, we don't take them lightly, like Dr. Mr. Margot said. So I hope that you understand that, and I hope that you believe that, because it's important for us to get through this together. And that is not a slogan for me, that is a very serious commitment that I have to the, to the seat. And I, I, again, I, I feel that my entire, that the board here tonight is, is also. You know, shares those feelings with me. So thank you for your, for your concerns, they're valid, they're well taken. And you've given my, you've given us a lot to consider. So with that, I'd like to circle back to my colleagues, if there's any further questions or comments, this is your turn, please raise your hand. I see Mr. Margot's, and after that, we'll call for the question, thank you, Mr. Margot.
Before I start, Mr. Krishanian, did you want to add anything else? We don't want to, I don't want to gloss over you.
Actually, one thing I'd like to add regarding the pods that you brought up. Just one way that we could do it, just giving an idea. Since many parents probably know other parents, they could make their own pod. But for the parents that don't, or for the parents who are looking for other parents to do this with. I think it's a good idea if we could send out an email that way. Send out like a survey or just like a quick question, yes or no, for parents who want to like opt into, to like a long list of. Like families or parents that want to join and that way we could group them into groups of five. And get them in touch, in touch with each other, I don't know, just an idea.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's great, I think also the PTAs are a great tool to help. Move that process along, they're very connected to their own communities and they can help connect people live probably easier than we could from the district office. The last thing I wanted to say, it's been discussed a lot, and I, and I, and I, and Mr. Seaman, I really appreciate the explanation on the ILC versus. The live and how that plays out for parents that want that complete independent experience. Because they don't, they just don't want to be involved. But I, I think that if our goal is to create a live instruction. That is similar to what a student would be receiving in a classroom. Then if for any reason we do start bringing kids back, and like we said, we don't know if that's going to happen, we don't know when it's going to happen. But I would feel much more comfortable approving this plan today if I knew that students had the option to say, look, I've been doing. You know, 12 weeks already with the live at home, I know I can go back maybe for four weeks now. Campus is going to go back and of the four weeks, I'm only going to go back a third of that time. I just want to stay home. I want to know that our instruction is set up in such a way, because that's what I'm hearing, we're trying to set up this wonderful instructional experience to the kids. That that parent has the option to keep their kid home and not, and not from the get-go have to put them in the ILC. I hope that makes sense, because I think we have an opportunity to do something really amazing here with our technology. That we could, we could actually do that. And, and by the way, I happen to feel that if, if, based on the letters we've read tonight, this afternoon. That if we do wind up phasing back in, it's not going to be very easy to staff those classrooms either. So I think we have to consider that as well. If this thing, if this, if we, if our county doesn't put a lid on this pandemic. It's not going to be that easy to get anybody on campus. And we know from surveys that we've, that we've seen and, and that we've taken that the majority of the kids will want to come back. But not 100% of them want to come back in any form at all until this thing is beaten. So I just hope that we keep all of that in mind as we develop and, and, and we're flexible. So I just hope that we keep all of that in mind as we develop and, and, and we're flexible. Really important. We've been flexible. I am very impressed. I'll, I'll echo what Mr. Spitz said. Very impressed with what you guys have presented here today. It was a lot to digest. Will it be posted for people to review now? The draft? Yeah. Okay. I mean, well, I know it's the final. You said it's going to be on Friday. So hopefully people will spend the time reading it and to see all of the elements that you guys have to deal with. You don't have a choice. We can sit up here on the dais, the proverbial virtual dais and, and pass our judgment and ask questions. But the day-to-day operations of pulling any of this off is, is incredibly difficult. And I give all of you, every bit of staff member, every teacher out there, props for hoping that we'll work this out and we will make it successful for our students. And people will be so impressed, as we've always said, that all of a sudden the light bulb goes off on the map and then everybody remembers what a great district we are because we take our resources. We take our wonderful teachers. We take our wonderful families and we have a wonderful combination of, of all of our stakeholders to make our academic experience second to none. That's what has to drive this in the end, of course, after safety, always have to put that little asterisk there. So I just wanted to be clear on that. I am looking forward to this being very successful and people being excited that they'll, they will learn as they've never learned before and they may learn more than they've ever learned before. We don't know. You can teach somebody a half a block away. You can teach somebody around the world with this method. So we really have an opportunity to do something special here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you for that, Mr. Margot. Um, anybody else, um, before we go to the question? Hey, Destin, I do have a question that just as you were all talking, Destin, let me just, um, voice this and maybe you or Mrs. Kaber want to speak to this or Mr. Bugby. So there's, here's a thought that came, um, that was shared with, with me a few weeks ago. And as I was listening to Mr. Margot speak about the pods and Mr. Kashanian, it came to my, you know, my memory kind of like said, hey, don't forget this. But here's the thing. So in the past, I know that when you all put your classes together for the little guys, sometimes you try to separate friends because kids become more engaged that way. Students engage better when they're focused on their teacher as opposed to their friends. And I get that completely. But one parent said to me recently, you know, also in the line of trying to create these, these support groups for students to feel connected emotionally and to have, you know, support from their friends and build community. The opposite was proposed and said, hey, Isabel, why would you in this year, if we go virtual, would you separate children who already have friendships across, you know, the screen, if you will? Because that's one way of making students feel reconnected and building that community, um, experience for them. And so I thought that that was an important, um, I, I thought about it and I said, hey, you know what? That's, that sounds like something that is worthwhile exploring. And so I just wanted to share that with the principals that are here because I see Mrs. Kaber and Mr. Bugby are here and Destin. Um, so I'm not sure if that's been thought of. I'm not suggesting that be done. I'm just asking you to consider it as it was made. I was brought, you know, made aware of that option that could possibly work. So wanted to share that. If you have anything to say, um, any feedback, you know, I think people watching would like to hear. And especially since these pods have been talked about.
Absolutely. I think that's a great point. Mrs. Kaber and I have definitely talked about that. The main thing to think about is we build classes on being in school. So we want to keep them with the thought that we are coming back to school as soon as possible, rather than rebuilding a class temporarily. Does that make sense?
That's, that's a good point. Thank you.
Okay. And on that note, just so that you know, Mrs. Kaber and I were talking this morning with our assistant principals about other ways that we can help. I don't want to get into details yet, but we're going to work through that this week and probably let other people know.
Right. I just want to make sure parents know that we're thinking about every option that is most beneficial for students. So I appreciate that and thank you. And Destin, you had something to say.
Yeah, I also just want to answer a misconception that also just kind of came up through this process is, um, the Independent Learning Center does provide, uh, AP courses at BHHS. So the only two AP courses that are not covered through the Independent Learning Center is AP Physics and AP Euro History due to the fact that that curriculum has not been canned. Not only will the students in the Independent Learning Center receive support in the AP courses, oh, I think there's 27 in total or I'm throwing out numbers, but outside of the two that I just named. Also, my AP has a student portal that the students in the ILC will be required to use as well for the resources and for part of the curriculum. So the ILC does support BHHS AP coursework. I just want to make that clear just because there's a misconception out there.
Okay. Um, any follow-up questions for Destin's last note? Okay, great. So we're going to call for the question. So we're going to do roll call. Um, and again, the question is, you know, opting in or, or approving the options that have been presented to us tonight. So we'll start with Mr. Margot. Mr. Margot?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I may yes as well. And that passes 4-0. Thank you, uh, for your, um, for showing up tonight and for being part of this important conversation. Thank you again to the staff. And, um, if there's any other comments that my, um, colleagues want to make, I don't think so. I think we will. Thank you again for today. And if you have any questions to the parents or teachers, um, having to do with logistics, I really encourage you to write to the staff, to administration. They are the ones that really are working out the details. Um, and I thank you again for writing tonight and I look forward to seeing you soon. Have a good night. Have a good evening.
I wanted to ask Pam, I sent.
Marcus, you have a question?
I sent a question. I sent a question to Pam and I, uh, I don't know if you saw the question about presentation being given to us as an attachment. Has it been done that yet? Today's present.
I'm, as soon as I get it from Dr. Brighi, I'll attach it. And then do you want it sent to you too?
So if you send it to me, um, by email, I mean, you know, by the attachment, I'll, I'll get it.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
And, and we'll send that to you. Uh, there was, uh, some formatting, uh, there were some shifts with some of the, um, some of the graphics. So we'll get that to you, uh, as soon as possible.
Thank you to the staff. Thank you, Rebecca, uh, Mr. Carey and Ms. Kaber, Mr. Damon, um, Ryan. I can't see your last name. Sorry. Mr. Reed and, um, Destin, Mr. Ellis, uh, Mr. Kashanian for being here today as a student representative, Mr. Dr. Horvath, um, Mr. Whit Roach, and of course, um, Mr. Dr. Brighi for, and Mr. Bugby. Thank you, Ms. Chisholm, everybody for being here and Ms. Crashar as well. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.